This conference will now be recorded.
Commissioner Jennings?
President.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioners Dillon?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here. We will have the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance done by Ethan Mahalcheck. First.
Bless Ark City. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ethan.
Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
I have something for you. Thanks, man. Good job.
There you are, Ethan. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ethan.
Thank you, sir, for coming.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, we do not.
Okay. Need approval of the agenda?
We approve the agenda as written.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any words and proclamations? Okay. Recognition of visitors? Do we have anyone that wishes to address the commission?
Waiting for the golf cart discussion there.
Okay.
So.
So. Oh, that's fine. Comments from the audience that are not on the agenda? Do we have anyone who would like to address the commission?
You can wait till the discussion on that if you want. Yeah, me either.
No problem. Okay, on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the consent agenda as written?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the August 2nd regular minute meetings and August 2nd special meeting minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to new business.
In ordinance authorizing the rezonation of 405 South Third Street from C-3 General Commercial District to R1 Low Density Residential District.
And commission, Jose and Karina Garcia requested a rezone for 405 South Third Street. The project is to convert the former McCool's Greenhouse into a dwelling. And so they had requested originally to be rezoned from C3 General Commercial to the R3 High Density Residential. The Planning Commission held the public hearing on Tuesday, July 12th. And at the end of the hearing, they took into con- They took the concerns of some of the citizens into their decision and kind of consulted with the applicants and determined that they would recommend that R1 zoning be used instead of R3, which is the low density instead of the high density. While staff recommend or understands why they did that, I still recommend that we go with R3, the high density. It matches the surrounding district that it's in. And the thing about the R3s, it's not just about the use, it's also about the density of the district. There's kind of a strange mix in that neighborhood because it's kind of a core neighborhood. Lots of, not always multifamily, but there's lots of real small lots that are in that neighborhood. That, I open to any questions you might have.
But they asked for an R1?
Originally, they had it requested in R3.
You say "they," the applicants, right? Applicants said R3.
I understand that you're recommending an R3.
Yes. Now, R1, I'll be open with you, will work for what they're wanting to do. As far as I understand.
So our options are either approve it to an R1 with just an ordinance, or we'd have to go back through and change it to an R3 with a two-
You would have to, because that is still overriding their decision. Or you could send it back to them if you wanted.
So the Planning Commission said R1?
Yes. Yes.
And why would they say R1 and you want R3? I mean, what's the-
For me, it's about that cohesiveness of the district. It's a little unusual to have such a low level zoning in the middle of the higher density zoning that's in the area. That's why I'm suggesting that, again, having that zoning is not going to cause a huge problem if you choose to go with that. I would just give you my-
I mean, I'm- My thoughts were just, speaking of a lot being on the Planning Commission years ago, I mean, the comprehensive plan and trying to keep districts uniform is always kind of the key and it helps the city stay organized. Regardless of which way we go, I hate to send this, I'd like to get some resolution on this tonight for the Planning Commission and for the homeowners wanting to move forward. But I see the concerns, being on the Planning Commission, having those comprehensive plans and having those discussions, trying to figure out, what do you want, commercial, residential, and trying to keep it uniform. So I understand where the city's, from that standpoint, is coming from, so.
Mr. White, are there, in the area of discussion, are there a number of undeveloped lots? I mean, are the property, are there parcels of land that don't have a structure on them? A residential structure?
In that neighborhood?
Yes, in the, in the, you've given me red, blue. In the blue, do we have vacant lots?
Not very many, that I'm aware of. Most of those are, it's still pretty densely compact because that's kind of our older neighborhood. Most of that neighborhood, I think, was early 1900s, I think, is when a lot of those houses were built.
Okay.
They used smaller lots. That's just how it was developed back then.
But-
If I'm looking at this correctly, on Third Street- Excuse me. Yeah, on Third Street, south of Adams, is-
R3?
If that's-
I'll wait until she gets filled out, I can verify. I didn't bring all my stuff with me today.
I'm gonna hope that, I'm gonna hope this map is the same as your map there. That'll make life simpler for me. I need simple right now.
It is.
So. But, all right, I'm looking at, just on the very clip of this, West Jefferson, which is the avenue south of the area of discussion, shows me R3. On Adams, north of Adams, am I seeing this right? The areas there, the two, Third Street and Fourth Street, show me R3 also. So everything around this is R3.
Can't even tell where my house is.
And, and the recommend- And the recom- And the recommendation, you see the little clip there just says Jefferson and you can see just the edge of that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it continues on.
R3. And, but your recommendation is?
Is R3.
Yours is R3. Planning Commission is?
Is R1.
R1. And so, so the R1 would functionally be more restrictive on this redevelopment property than it is on any of the other properties around this property of top discussion tonight. And I may have been, I didn't have my usual three minutes to get mentally prepared. I didn't not have been tracked in. So tell me again, what is the angst with going from C3 to R3 in an area where everything around it is already R3? And with the exception of the public use, which betrays it on the west?
I think the concern was the neighbors. Were concerned that that site could be developed into a much larger, more, multiple units, is what I should say. Because it's, it's an R3 district, it would allow for however many number of units that they want. Now, of course, you'd still have to meet setbacks. There's type requirements. There's restrictions that there are.
So do those restrictions, those already existing restrictions, do those significantly deter multi, I guess what we're talking, potentially multifamily housing? I mean, so I think it's kind of inconsequential whether we say R3 or R1 because I think the use for this land is really only going to service one residential dwelling. So, so, I mean, okay.
There was no plans from the applicant. Of course, that could change, of course. But there was no plans for the applicant to do anything beyond that building.
Okay.
It may end up being more than one unit at some point, but it won't be-
My question is, do they also own the land to the south of it? Where the old greenhouses were that were torn down?
Yeah. Yeah, that's all one property. I think there's a house in that first property to the south of it. That's actually where the- I don't think there's a big lot there. Let me just say it that way.
So then the, the pushback is, is some concern about the intent of the property, of the owner of the property of discussion, that that, they might covertly want to have a multifamily dwelling there?
It's actually not so different a conversation than we had with the rezonation from a month or two ago.
Correct, that's, that's what, you know-
Same, similar conversation.
So, so the Planning Commission wants us to governmentally restrict this development so that they make sure that it's only an R1. But if someone were to acquire the properties across the street that are zoned R3, those lots could ultimately harbor multifamily dwellings. So then we have a residential trapped over here and somebody able to put up a duplex, triplex, something of that sort.
Again, restrictions of-
Type thing.
What the lots are.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
So.
Okay. What it makes, I know, appreciate Commissioner Rogers saying, let's, let's handle this here now. But, I don't know, I guess I'm getting curious why, why we didn't just, because we don't have any multifamily dwellings in any of this area of discussion. All the blue that sits on display tonight, surrounding area. Why didn't we just go through the processes of making that a, just rezoning the whole area, R1? And then saying we're restricting redevelopment?
Well, the problem with that is that there are, there are some multifamily units in there. There's not like apartment complexes, but there are several residents there that are two, three, four units that have developed over the years. Where there was a large house and they just divided it up.
Oh, okay, made like rental units out of it? Okay.
There's a view like that.
Okay.
In that block?
Not that block, no.
Okay.
And then, within a block or two, there's, there's some stuff like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 and we're getting into the realm of what we discussed like years ago with the compuse thing about the mixed use deal and that. So we want to have one R1 in a neighborhood of R3s. Where we have R3s because some structures, they're actually justifying R3 zoning, but we don't want this redevelopment to, okay, all right, I just, Dr. Spock's doing this fault logic here, I'm sorry. So we want R1 where there are existing R3s and zoning R3s, but we want to make sure that this particular property stays single dwelling, single family dwelling, R1, with the awareness that some future development could go in because this is zoned R3 and turn it into multifamily.
This is curious.
Units, that's, I just hope.
Well, that's what they asked for.
Seems, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm stuck, I'm stuck in a loop here, okay? All right. I'll stop. I'll stop. Thank you for indulgence, Mayor and-
Oh.
Mr. White. Thank you.
Somebody else have-
Well, that being said, they asked for R1, right?
Originally, the application was for the R3.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't know that. Then they changed it?
The Planning Commission changed it to R1.
Okay, that's, that's what, that's where I'm trying to get at.
The applicants wanted R3, the, with everything else there is R3. The Planning Commission said, we want to keep this one R1, which, okay, but if someone goes across the street from that lot and buys two or three lots, they can make that whatever they want because it's already R3. So you're limiting one spot to be R1 when everything else is R3. And I know we do the comprehensive plan and from a Planning Commission standpoint, you always try to keep, if you can, things together. So you don't have a commercial next to residential, next to industrial. You try to have zones so things are organized.
Was that an R3 because the whole section was already R3? Did you say to them, oh, it's our R3? So that's what they wrote down?
And that's what-
When they came to the Planning Commission, they said, we want a single family home with our adult son's gonna live in the same area.
I think the cities, from the city's-
We told them it was an R3 and that's what they wrote down. But when they came in and talked, they said, we just want a single family.
They said that exactly.
And if you do an R3, or if you do R3, you can still build it as an R1. But if you make it an R1, can't do anything other than-
You can reapply, but yeah, I mean, I don't know.
But you can build a-
I had no idea it was an R3.
You can build a single family unit there if we, if we say R1. But someone with a resource could come and acquire all of this property across the street and say, hey, we want to redevelop this whole area and develop multifamily. And so now we have a-
Without any public input.
So, Josh, why isn't it commercial rated? That, that business was there for-
No, no, it is commercial today.
Okay. They can't live there.
Yeah, it probably was, I'm guessing, years ago on a comprehensive plan they went through and labeled stuff and they said, well, there's a business there. All right, we'll make that lot a C2 or C3, leave everything else R3.
Otherwise-
So that's probably how that was, assuming that's, and that's probably done years ago.
I think your staff narrative said that somewhere some of the documentation in that process got misplaced, so that, I think if I read that correctly, that-
Oh, yeah, there was, that was the case that rezoned it from, it was, that was when it became commercial, actually. And I couldn't find any files. It was from the 60s, I think.
Yeah, because I knew they'd been there a long time.
Okay. Well, then.
I'd like to consider, I mean, any more discussion? I don't want to-
Oh.
Yeah. So what is the overall?
Who's this? His name is-
Can you come-
Driving force. I'm sorry.
They want you to come up.
I'll be open for public comment.
I'm Dustin Schutz. I live at 2115 Central Court in Ark City. Also own a property at 1203 North Third in Ark City. I'm just curious is, what the pushback is for not allowing R1 in that district? Does it have anything to do with college? The college is a building annex.
You have to ask Josh. How do I answer that question?
What college is?
Or someone from the college. I think it was strictly make, keeping it from, and Josh was strictly keeping it uniform with the surrounding areas because if college could technically, in your situation, take any of that and make it-
We're, I mean, somebody wants behind, I'm not real familiar with Jefferson and Adams, but I know Third Street.
It's right across from Webb Brown parking lot. No, but he's south of that.
Yeah.
He's south of that, yeah. He's in the next block.
If you do not, I'm just asking a question. If you do not allow a residential development or a, or a multiplex family area, what, why not? That place is dilapidated and it's overgrown and-
You're saying make it an R, allow an R3?
Yeah, I mean, why not let, let's build new houses and let the community grow. I mean, those houses are 100 years old.
So you're saying make it an R3 so they can do multifamily?
Exactly.
Like everything else in there?
Josh's-
That's what Josh is, that's what-
That's what I'm trying to interpret.
Yeah, that's what Josh is trying, that's what-
That's what I was gonna say, is to keep it uniform and one and two, everything else around there is already R3. So you're right. Work on the lottery and you want to take over a whole neighborhood, make it all new apartments for college kids, you could technically-
Yeah.
If you, I mean, yes, and you're, if you-
Would you be saved if you did that from the college annexing or the city annexing that property?
Or acquiring, you mean?
Or forcing the acquiring.
Randy, city manager?
I guess I'm not quite sure what's-
City owns it.
Question is, but it's already annexed. It's in the city limits. I think that-
I know it's city limits, but what I'm saying is-
I think he's talking about eminent domain.
It wants people to move out and say, we're gonna buy your house, here's our offer. If you don't like it-
Okay.
To answer your question-
That's your offer.
That's a college. To answer your question is, no, it has nothing to do with that process. Totally doesn't-
That's all I was curious about.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's just, it's kind of a-
You're gonna make the motion? I was just gonna say that we, I'd like to make a motion that we can send an ordinance authorizing the rezoning of 405 South Third Street from C3 General Commercial District to R3 High Density Residential District. And yes, I did say R3.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. It's a roll call vote?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any further discussion?
Well, just clarification. That is the, and the recommendation of the Planning Commission was?
R1.
R1. Okay, and so we have to have a super majority to override the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Correct.
Do we have, other than, I'm not, that I'm questioning the integrity of the veracity of your report, any voice from the Planning Commission here that you want to share the logic? Okay, well, all right. Thank you. Appreciate you indulging me with my questions.
Yeah, no problem. Okay. Any further discussion?
Not here, Madam Mayor.
It's a roll call vote?
Commissioner Jennings?
Wait a minute. On the motion of making it an R3.
Of making this-
Overriding the Planning Commission to R3.
Okay. I'm gonna vote in favor, aye.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Josh, should we?
What? What are we laughing about?
Josh, should we, why we voted, can you go back to the Planning Commission and tell them why we did this? Okay.
Next item?
Consider a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter a contract with Utility Incorporated, date catered, Georgia, for 27 body worn cameras with an upfront fee not to exceed $54,000 for 2022 and $150,000 over five years.
Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So we're gonna talk body worn cameras this evening. Body worn cameras have become essential in law enforcement for creating accountability, but it's also best evidence. Currently, the Arkansas City Police Department has used body worn cameras since 2015. We are at the point where we need to upgrade our current software and technology. In doing so, we tasked a committee to look into options for body worn cameras. Over that time, over that span of time from 2015 to current, the technology has changed dramatically, especially as it comes to data storage. So currently, we're using the WatchGuard Vista. So this is our current camera platform that we have. Each one of these costs $1,000 upfront that we purchased around 2015. How these work is that when officers go out and do traffic stops and contact people in the public and they turn these on, it records that as an incident and it just stores it in there. So the officer then, at the end of their shift, after the end of their 12-hour shift, goes back to the station and puts it in a dock and has to dock all of those incidents into the computer system. At this point, with this technology being as old as it is, that takes a lot of time. The other thing that we have to do is we have to sit and we have to categorize each of the contacts that we had. So whether it was a traffic stop or a field interview or an incident report, domestic violence, whatever it may be, the officer has to take the time to make sure that they're categorized correctly because we have a retention schedule that will actually kick out files that are more than five years old, three years old, one year old, 90 days old. So when we were looking at new technologies, we reached out to three companies. We reached out to Axon, WatchGuard, again, with a, with new technology, and Utility Body Worn Solutions. Our recommendation is with Utility Body Worn Solutions. And I can give you the court amounts on what we were looking at. So for Axon, each of these is a five-year term. So these are all lease programs with all three of these technologies. $95,789.42 over five years. Motorola, who has since bought WatchGuard, a five-year term of $95,140. Utility Body Worn Solutions is also a five-year term for $150,000 over five years. The body worn camera committee suggests, and their recommendation is with Utility Body Worn Cameras, which is the high bid. However, what we found is that Utility is more than just a camera. Axon and WatchGuard are just basically that. They're a camera that fixes to the outside of our uniforms. The problems that we have with external mount cameras is they come off. So if we get into a foot chase, if we get into a scuffle or a use of force situation, these things have a tendency of coming off and then not being useful. And it brings into question about accountability at that point because at that point, we have to do what we need to do being police officers and we may not have this to back us up as far as best evidence at that point. Why we like Utility is that it's actually mounted inside of our uniform shirts. So it's not gonna go anywhere. What you will see as Commissioners and as the public is a small grommet that is actually sewn into our uniform shirts or our external carriers. And that camera is not going anywhere. The Utility Body Worn Solution uses cellphone technology. It's basically a cellphone that has been rewired and reprogrammed to be a camera. What we found is that it's very smart. It's very intuitive. If, if I take off running after a suspect or I'm running to a critical incident, that camera will automatically come on. These cameras have an external button that every time that I get out to talk to somebody or I get out of the car and chase after someone, I have to remember, out of all those things that I do as a police officer, to hit that button to make it record. The Utility Body Worn Solution is very smart. It senses when I'm running. It will sense when I'm fighting. If I get into a fight with someone, it will automatically come on. It is connected with the patrol cars. So when the lights come on and the sirens come on, it will automatically activate. There are just a tremendous amount of things that we like about Utility Body Worn Cameras. One of the other things is unlimited cloud storage. So we don't have to take these, we don't have to take our cameras back and dock them and wait for them to upload and then mark, you know, the- mark, you know, the different incidents. Another thing that's really nice is that we would be able to share links with the courts and with defense attorneys and prosecutors, so that way, when they ask for discovery in court, we can just send a link to them and they have access to that rather than burning discs like we're currently doing. Oh, another thing, there's so many things, sorry, I made some notes. There is a sensor that is installed on our holsters, so that way, when our gun is removed from the holster, it automatically turns on. It's just, it's that smart. And the best option that I like is the Officer Down Alert, where the, the cellphone, as long as it's upright, it can record, it can do whatever we need it to do, but once it goes horizontal for any length of time, let's say 10 seconds, 15 seconds, it senses that it's down, which would be the officer down. At that point, it will give an audible alert to the officer that I'm getting ready to issue Officer Alert, Officer Down Alert. And if no response, what it'll do is it'll communicate with all the other cameras that are working, so we have upwards of three to four, five officers that are working at any one given time. And so what it will do, it will automatically let their cameras know with, with an audible alert that Officer Jones is down and give.
It'll give a location or is he down there?
Yeah, it's GPS enabled. We can also, that information is also available to dispatch, so they, they would have the ability to look on a laptop computer to see where that officer is, and it can also livestream. So once that Officer Alert goes out, it can livestream from that camera to see what the, what the officer would be seeing. So whether it's grass or sky or maybe fighting with someone, that's actionable information for the officers that are responding. So I know I covered, I covered a lot, but our recommendation is the Utility Body Worn Camera. I will add that the first year of $54,000 is a budgeted item up to about 24, but we received a grant through the American Rescue Plan Act for $25,000 for body worn cameras. So we will be able to offset at least half of that first year's payment with a grant in reimbursement.
So one of the things you talked about at the work session so that the public understands is that when you're running, the camera comes off, now you get a video of the sky or a video of the ground for, until they find that camera again and get it back on their shirt.
That's true.
So, yeah.
And you're, you're saying by that point, if there was an incident, that camera's no longer valid to protect the officer or protect the civilian if it's something, whoever may be involved, yes.
In the presentation that we got, Utility Body Worn Solutions, I don't want to sound like a commercial for them, but he, he told us that there was an officer involved shooting and that it actually recorded right up to the point where the officer was shot through the camera. So it, it got all of that, all of that footage. One thing that I think is important too is that with the systems that are put into the patrol cars, that when I get within range of the patrol car, whatever data I have on my computer or my camera will be automatically uploaded to the cloud.
To the cloud.
So there's no, there's no sitting and docking and waiting and, and those kind of things, it's just gonna automatically go for me.
So I have just another quick question that was brought up to me. You say it's in the uniform shirt.
Yes.
So does that mean they're transferable to another shirt or is that something the officer does? How does that work or is it, they're all sewn in?
That's a good question. So this particular product, what they, what they will do is they will give us a stipend to buy some new uniform shirts and we can order them with the grommet and the hole already installed, but then we can also send our current uniform shirts to their home office indicator and they will install the grommet in our uniform shirts. So we, we would have, you know, three, four, five uniform shirts.
Everybody has their shirt, so does it transfer into another one or do, are they actually, every shirt has a camera?
No, 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 it, it's just one camera and like this particular shirt is a zipper, then I can just slide that into a holder.
Gotcha.
Inside of my uniform shirt and, and the camera would actually line up with that.
Yep, got it. Well, I think it's, I think you've done an amazing job at reviewing everything and getting the best offer and, so, I'm very pleased.
Thank you.
Eddie.
Can I just name a message to you, please?
Sure, well, you're supposed to come back up.
Did, did you say, I may have misheard you, but if you draw your gun, the camera goes off?
It will come on. It'll act.
It'll activate it. Activates it.
So, yeah. So what they do is they'll, they will actually install, it's almost like a magnet, a Bluetooth technology kind of.
Right. Yeah.
So you said, the camera goes off.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Diana, are you gonna make it?
It's a magnet between my gun and what's installed on the outside. Okay, come on.
So the only question I have, is the officer having the ability to decide?
Madam Mayor, can we? Can we kind of condense this discussion? If we're gonna have more input, can we, rather than having a room session? Can we, I mean, if somebody always wants to speak, you can allow them to speak, but rather than doing this.
Okay.
Otherwise, we, we lose all of that. And who, who?
I'm ready, yes.
Yeah, Wes Cockriff.
Okay, I move that we authorize the City of Arkansas City to enter to a contract with Utility Incorporated, Decatur, Georgia, for 27 body worn cameras with an upfront fee not to exceed $54,000 for 2022 and $150,000 over five years.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the Commission?
I have two questions, number one, did the gentleman who asked the question get an answer and do we have it of record? And secondly, you talked about, I think if I got that down, $49,000 out of $54,000? Is either budgeted or a grant award? So we have $5,000 that we haven't. Okay, $5,000 that we had to pony up.
Twenty, is that right? And I have other line items that, that I could cover that $5,000 with.
Oh, okay. Okay, and so then, going forward then, am I understanding this to be, I'm sorry, I'm in simple mode tonight, is that?
$30,000 a year or $150,000 a year?
It's $150 over the rest of the five, so it'd be $24,000 each year through the end of the contract, and that's already budgeted for next year.
Twenty-four thousand a year? Okay, and, but that fits into your future budget?
Yes, it does, yeah. Basically, I had, had already thought ahead that we were gonna have to look at a five-year term in my 2023 budget.
Okay. Okay, so you would, okay, let me get.
So you would pay this out?
Out of the 2023 budget or you're gonna pay it?
Yes, so the $24,000 would be out of the 2023 budget and then for subsequent budget years, we'll add that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Until it's paid off.
Okay, yeah, I just, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, I'm, my.
I should have brought my calculator.
Okay, thank you, I better understand it, so, so you have line item to cover the additional $5,000 this year and then you have allowed for the amounts to cover in the subsequent years?
Yes.
Okay, what?
And then the.
Okay, I, I think I'm satisfied, thank you, appreciate your.
Again, your indulgence, I just.
Chief? So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next?
Consider a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to enter a contract that will replace the current siren located at the 500 block of South Sixth Street from Precision Communications, Aberdeen, Mississippi, but they vow not to exceed $19,640.39.
All right, it's me again.
No.
And I brought it back in. So Bob Prezy is the Emergency Management Coordinator. I know that at work session, we did have some questions about the sirens. This is a budgeted item for purchase and three quotes were obtained, which include emergency fire equipment out of Mayfield, Kansas for $20,926, CBL Electric out of Pittsburgh, Kansas for $23,312, and then Precision Communications out of Aberdeen, Mississippi for $19,640. At this point, we would make a recommendation for the low bid from Precision Communications.
Thank you, Chief.
Is that the most?
With the difference in prices on the shipping.
Yeah, that's fine. Coverage wise, are these overlapping?
Actually, this one here's not gonna be at 515 South Sixth. That's, that's a habit at United House in the future, so we need to move that. And then plus, when we did the study a few years ago on coverage, it should get moved about four or five blocks, that'd be about around Jackson and Sixth Street. And then that'll make it more uniform. Right now, it's close to a couple other sirens.
Okay.
So, which are the new, new style that run, run on batteries that you could talk on.
So this is a battery operated?
The new one.
New one with this battery operating, and you'll be able to, if you had to make an announcement, you're saying that, that would be a speaker for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that'll cover that area, right now, that doesn't, that area doesn't have anything like that.
Right, it just has the, the siren.
Yeah, it's a 1977 siren.
That was a good year.
Forty-five years ago today, Elvis Presley died, so that siren's 45 years old.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, I seen that on the news this afternoon, 45 years ago today.
Anybody else have any questions?
So this is replacement relocation?
Yes, yeah, being replaced and then it'll be relocated.
And you're saying further south?
Further south. Right, and I won't know till I get with the regime, we'll, we'll go down and figure out a place to put it.
Okay.
So Larry, on this, we got, you know, we got the location, so we just maybe approve the siren for the map and not, not the location?
Not the location.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
You're just purchasing the siren.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Hold on just a second, we have a citizen that wants to speak, you have to come up.
Dustin shoots again. What is the problem with the current siren that's in place, that's 1974?
Seven.
Seventy-seven. We haven't had any fatalities down there due to a tornado in that timeframe, so why?
It's 45 years.
Can I finish, please? So why is there a need for a $20,000 purchase of a siren that's not to include also the, the paying for it to be set and everything else and, and the electric utilities to be there? And how much does that cost? You don't know.
Oh, around $3,000, $4,000.
You're guessing, but you don't have a quote.
And we won't know till we.
So why would we spend $25,000 on a siren?
Well, that'll be.
So that you can speak of it rather than the siren we already have that has never proved to be inadequate because we've never had a fatality in that area due to a tornado? That's just more money than the cities, than you're wanting, you're asking the city to spend, but it, it's frivolous, there's nothing there that says, we need this because this catastrophe happened or this one did not, or whatever, or the, or the alarm failed. It's a working unit and we've never had a death in that area due to tornadoes. So please answer.
In May 17, 1981, a tornado went through there.
Okay, so.
And 40, 41.
Okay, okay.
Let him speak.
And then in 2002.
No, your phone.
The ice storm took that out. And we rebuilt that siren.
So is that thing dying? That's my question.
Not the one below.
Okay. I wanna make sure that.
But, don't.
I know, but we haven't, we're not the ones that.
The failure, yes, Chief. Had one failure in 40 years, so why? Thirty something, or 25 to 30 grand. The problem is.
All right.
Thank you, he does, thank you. Did you? No? Okay, thank you. Is this the budget tonight?
Yes, yes, it is.
Functionality of municipal safety is we don't want to be reactive to someone, to a fatality that could have been avoided. It's the, it's the same thing as why put a stop sign at a dangerous intersection? I mean, if you, roll back, scroll this back, scroll this back, we're at the commission discussion now, and how we lost, we had what, two or three while we were in the process of building out US 177 to bike, to, to loop around because of poor traffic controls?
And I don't think anybody felt good about lives lost in that. We don't want to wait until somebody's dead to do something about it. We want to be proactive in terms of protecting our citizens. It's like, everybody thinks the police are superfluous until they're in trouble and then it's like, where were they?
They're on location.
So we, we are being proactive and with safety rather than reactive.
Oh, I'm sorry, you did?
Yes, ma'am.
So one of the things you study in your job is the replacement of sirens throughout the city so that they're.
Yeah, updated.
Yeah, and so other cities are trade theirs out, they get rid of them and get the new battery ones?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Schuett?
Mr. Jennings.
Can you come to, yeah, sorry.
You comparing a stop sign that costs, I'm gonna say, less than $500, correct, sir? Maybe you get assumption?
No, I'm not comparing anything.
No, no, sir, you did, you did, no, you did, sir.
I'm talking loss of life, sir.
But you said.
Well, okay.
So that's where I'm at, so I'm not, I'm not gonna debate.
What are you trying to get to, to?
Here's the deal, that thing costs 30 grand and a stop con, stop sign costs 500 bucks.
Okay.
That's a big difference, you can't compare apples to weeds.
Okay, well, and, and I appreciate, we appreciate your.
Call the question, Madam Mayor.
So, um, the cost of the sirens is just the cost of the sirens. I mean, that's what technology costs now. Commissioner Jennings would like, are you making a motion?
I'm, who's asking for cessation of discussion, we have a motion on the floor.
Well, if we do that, then we have to.
We don't have a motion on the floor, do we?
No.
We do not have a motion on the floor yet.
But if we call for that, then we're gonna have to vote on that, so.
Well, I'll make a motion, we, uh, not, make a motion, we buy a siren, not to exceed $19,640.39, but it will, but it won't be on that location that we've got on this, uh, in our packet, so whatever that location's gonna be.
Per the city manager? Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we purchased the siren for $19,640.39. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, it's a voice void, well, you know what I mean. Okay, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, anything?
We do have another item for consideration.
Okay.
Select three voting delegates and three alternates for the 2022 Leica Municipalities Annual Business Meeting to be held Monday, October 10, 2022. to be held Monday, October 10, 2022.
So currently, Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Jennings, and Mayor Giger have signed up to attend the league conference as well as myself. I don't know if anybody else has signed up yet or not. I intend to, but so there's the four folks there that could possibly be voting delegates, so. City our size is entitled to three voting delegates at the annual convention or at the meeting. So just need one, three folks that will, that will vote, so.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion that the three people that are going to go to the convention be the, be the voting delegates.
Okay, seconded. We have a motion and a second. Any?
I said the three people that's going to go to.
Three electeds?
The three commissioners or because Randy could vote too.
Yeah.
Okay, and you would be an alternate? You would be an alternate?
I think the rest of us three would be the alternate. I, I know there's three, we have three voting delegates, I know that for sure, and.
Well, he's asking if the commission are the voting delegates or if two commissioners and you are the voting delegates.
No, just to clarify, the, the motion was the three people going, but I think we have four bodies going, so you're saying the three electeds?
Yeah. On the voting.
Thank you.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. City managers report.
So. You want to discuss the special vehicle ordinance first?
Yes, let's do that.
You know, we've had a request from citizens to look at that. It's been about, probably the first request was about maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago now. Chief Burris has been looking at some different, where did he go? There he is.
How do you laugh?
Chief Burris passed with looking at that and, because obviously his department would have to, will have to oversee and enforce any of those types of ordinances. So ask him to, to look into what other cities were doing and come up with some suggestions that, that he was comfortable with as police chief that we could present to the commission and kind of start working on the process of what that may look like, if, if that's something you decide to move forward with, so.
Well, he just kind of gives the background like he did at our workstation on Friday, so these people here can hear what was said.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you all for coming, by the way. I feel very popular today. Most loving audience. I don't really. But thank you very much for giving me the time to talk about this topic. And I know that it has been a topic of discussion in Winfield as well. So what I did, and I've worked on this at least for the last six months or so, trying to gather information from other municipalities to see how they handle golf carts, UTVs, ATVs, and micro utility vehicles. And the best option that I saw was out of Andover, Kansas. So I believe in your packet is a draft ordinance, just completely draft ordinance, based on what I saw in Andover's ordinance. So really, looking at it, it has written in the aspects of inspection and registration. So a person would register with the city one time, pay a $25 fee, be inspected, and have a sticker affixed somewhere on the back of that particular vehicle, whichever it may be, of all of those categories. The inspection would have to do with lighting. So if a vehicle's going to be operated after dark, it would obviously need to have required lighting for that that's set out by the statute. This particular draft ordinance, and again, I'm just at this point looking for some input and feedback from the commission and from the audience as well. I'm really glad that you guys are here. But limiting, limiting the operation to basically side streets within our Kansas City. Safety is first and foremost in my mind. I want to make sure that we don't have any vehicle accidents like actual cars versus golf carts, UTVs, micro utility vehicles. So I'm very cautious about where we should allow the operation of those particular vehicles. So state statute requires not on a Kansas highway. And then what was written into the draft ordinance only is not on Summit Street. So it can cross Summit but not operate directly north and south on Summit Street. There are some limitations about age. So 16 years of age, valid license status for operation. And then I've already talked about some of the lighting restrictions that are in there. So where, where we would need to go from here? Number one, I would like to get some community feedback about this issue because I haven't really had any discussions outside of, just with staff and within the police department about this particular ordinance moving forward. So I am open to any feedback and input that the commission would have or from anybody within the community. Because we just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing when it comes to something like this and making sure that the ordinances that, that we, that we put forth are, are safe, but it's also convenient for, for everyone that's involved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I know, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I know Commissioner Warren brought up before a little bit, just where, was maybe, and I kind of agree, getting a work session together and getting some of you guys and other community members a chance to, one, look over what Chief Burr's kind of put together. So you guys have some time to discuss and look and maybe bring back another, more citizens or a few of you or other people that aren't here tonight, have a chance to go over review and get some ideas. Maybe they're all happy with it or things that, a slam dunk and good to go? Or there may be some other questions or other concerns or safety issues we need to bring up? So that's what I recommend, but I would, if anyone wants to speak, please, yeah.
One question, you did, you did not mention insurance.
Yes, insurance is required as well. So they, they would show that proof with insurance at the time that it was registered with us.
But that register be a one-time deal?
One-time.
Okay.
And then if, if there's an occasion that we would have to, you know, take any enforcement action and we have a chance that we, we have to stop and talk to someone, we could ask for insurance.
I got a question. John in the paper called me, wanted to ask, that those little scooters we got that goes downtown, you know, goes down Summit. The question that he brought up is, why can't, you know, golf carts do the same thing what those little scooters do? I mean, is it because of the size or, I mean?
Yeah, to me, it's a size issue. The scooters can be operated on the sidewalk, although I'm not a big fan of operating on the sidewalk. And we know that we can't do that downtown because that's what's restricted by ordinance.
Yeah.
But the difference between the golf carts and the ATVs and those things is the, it doesn't have the opportunity to operate on the sidewalk like the scooters do.
The scooters fall under the bicycle ordinance. That's what council said. Thank you, Chief. Let's.
Come on up.
Carl Bowman, here in Arlington, 6425, 340. Yeah, I started this as city manager. Like Prezy said, I started this two years ago. And I'd taken it to Mr. Larry there, Mr. Schwartz. And I give him the Wellington deal, which I haven't not read the Andover sighting. I think it's a good thing, there's a lot of us here that use our buggies in town, save us fuel on our cars, trucks, whatever. I like what he's doing here, other than I don't understand why they're taking Summit Street off of the issue because I have seen bicycles, motorized bicycles, regular bicycle, a guy riding it with a rope, with a shopping cart, going right up Summit Street, the things weaving all over the road. I've seen guys on the scooter zigzagging from lane to lane. I have seen, I had a bicycle the other day. I was in the inside lane, it was a bunch of us. He was in the outside lane and he just came in front of us, slammed on my brakes on a bicycle. No turn signal, no hand signal. The kids today do not know what that is. So if we're going to do something, I, I don't see why you're taking our buggies off of Summit. It's just like a small car. As a matter of fact, it's better than the little electric car that's running around town. I have more stability, I have a seatbelt, I have a roll cage. I don't have doors, but it is, you know, and it'll do, mine will do 55 mile an hour. And several others will even go faster. I just don't, I like what you're doing and I hope you keep looking at it. But I would like to see the Summit Street taken off because, believe me, I'd rather drive a smooth street, mine's four-wheeling out in the dirt. But when I can go down a smooth asphalt street instead of a brick street or the dips, there you're going to have more accidents because people there at other intersections aren't going to pay attention. Summit Street, you'll at least be able to see. I, I don't see a safety issue running on Summit Street with our, with our buggies. I don't, I'm not talking golf carts, I'm talking side-by-side utility vehicles. The city even has them. They go in the parks, they spray their weeds. The college has some, they're driving them on the street around the college. I think it's just a good thing. And I hope you guys will look at it seriously and for Sarah, I can come in a list.
I have it right here.
This is Andover here, I want you to take that so you can read it.
Sure, appreciate it. And there's a couple more out that you want to, I can take them.
We've all had the, Charles, did you have the opportunity to see that petition list?
We have more out there, but I just got these from the people today when I heard about this meeting. So appreciate your time and if you have any questions, feel free to call.
I have one.
Or Susan.
When you talk about Summit, are you talking about the full length, north to south? I mean, all the, up to the, all the way up to restaurants and everything?
Sure.
I'm not judging, I'm just questioning some, because I'm going to take a look at some research and.
Anything from, what would be?
Well, Madison.
North, because Summit is.
All the way north to, north Casey's.
Yeah.
But we can't own that.
Basically towards about the Cali baseball field where they're, but not that far.
So anything that's a state highway, so basically Madison South.
Highway.
Can't be on a state highway.
I don't know where, I don't know where the highway turned back into highway is when the bypass cut back in or just north of Madison on.
Yeah, because it's one six there and then back west on Madison.
But I, you know.
Kansas is only, Kansas Avenue is only, she has of Kansas Avenue, only path. Once you get on the roundabout and once, I believe, you hit east of that roundabout, you get off Kansas and you're technically back on a.
State highway.
State highway.
So you could go Chestnut across the river, go across Madison. And you're right, the state, we can't drive them on state highways, but, and I need, and I'm trying to look this up, the mini trucks, which you mentioned in here, they've already been approved and they're also ridden on the state highway. So my buggy is just as good as that mini truck. And I'm going to talk to the highway patrol, I'm going to talk to other people because I have to come across the bridge to get in town. It's a quarter of a mile. I don't see any problem with speed limits 45, I can do that. And I'm just getting on from my road and then I'll get over to First Street, take it up to Madison and then go wherever I'd like to go. But that's just something I want to check into on that. I know we're not supposed to, when I was in New Mexico, and we took ours down there, you can run 10 miles of state highway for $25 permanent fee you put on your buggy. And if I go back down there tomorrow, I can run that 10 miles of state highway. So there is places that do allow them on certain pretty much of state highway. I've got a buddy here that, he's up in Iowa. And they allow them on state highway up real time. He said they don't have a problem. And that's, you know, that's another state, another place. I'm just, there's a few areas, Chestnut Bridge is still open. Guess what, I'd go there and come in on Chestnut Bridge. But they're going to tear it down. So anyway, I've taken enough of your time, but if you have other questions, I'm free to answer. Susan, my son, she, she does carry insurance online on a lot of them. So we do have our, our buggies insured, I do have lights, I have turn signal, I've got a horn. So, you know, basically street legal.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the commission on this subject?
Hi, I'm Susan Cochran. And I just want to say that we live six miles east of town and we have a lot of friends that are out by the drag strip. And in order to get out there in our buggies, we have to go all the way around the edges of town just to get over there. And it'd be really nice if we could just come through town and get out that way. Also, I would drive mine to the store, get groceries and drive on home with it. You know, it's not like we want to drive many. We just want to have access to get where we want to go without having to go the long way around. You know, they're very safe. We've got turn signals, horns, lights, all of those things that some other ATV vehicles don't have. We enjoy ours kind of like a two-seated motorcycle, but we have a whole lot more safety features than a motorcycle does because we have the seatbelts and the roll cages. So I just push for you to pass some things so that we have access to our city.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Come forward.
My name is Paul Grantham, I live out in South Timber, Carl. I work all over the United States and I take my buggy with me. And I'll just give you a quick rundown. In the last couple of years, I've worked in Washington, Oregon, Tennessee, West Virginia, Iowa, and Michigan at a minimum. And in every one of those states, you can drive a utility vehicle side-by-side that I've been in. I just left Iowa, come home. While I was up there, I asked the local fellas what I had to do. They have a one-time fee like we're talking about. I said, who do I pay it to? Because I'm going to ride my head here. They said, you're from out of state, you're only here for a few months, we're not going to mess with you. But I just want everybody to know, they're perfectly safe and they're used to all the light country. Let's use them here.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Please come forward.
I'm Tim Moore and some of you guys know I'm the president of the local. So, you know, I know lots of people that do this kind of stuff. And I agree, you know, we go to different states for off-road purposes. Even Oklahoma, you know, Oklahoma has a highway. You know, you tag them, you insure them, you do everything. And the thing that bothers me, you know, is the mini trucks. That's been talked about, people to this day still drive, also uninsured, mini trucks down the road that have had no kind of inspection, no kind of nothing. They're just made in China, for China, shipped over here in shipping containers. People buy them and we let them drive down the street. They have no safety standards for the United States, there's nothing. They're just unsafe vehicles. That's always been okay. Like stated before, most of these UTVs are designed to roll down a hill. You know, they are safe. You know, where your Ford Focus has a three mile an hour crash bumper on the front of it and this utility vehicle has a 20 mile an hour crash bumper on the front of it. And I don't feel that it is right to deprive downtown Ark City of the UTVs because like Susan said, you know, if I want to go into town and get groceries, oh, but if she wants to use Graves or other boutiques or whatever we have in town now, you know, we're depriving, make Ark City great by saying no Summit Street. That's my biggest thing I didn't like about, was brought up the Summit Street.
Okay.
I just wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you. So anyone else who wishes to speak, come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Wes Cochran. I do have a question with the way currently I read it is that you can cross Summit Street, you just can't go north or south? So if I want to drive, I work at J Airworks, so if I want to ride my, side-by-side to work, save money on gas with the eastern count, I could come up beside a Chinese restaurant, go north a half a block and go into the driveway of my employment. Is that going to be considered going north, south? Is that a technical offense? Is that something we can look at? I mean, do you get some relay or is it just at the discretion of the department? And I don't know, there's, there's so much unsafe stuff running all over this town. We got roll cages, we got seatbelts. It's just like driving my pickup, I have to have seatbelts. I have to follow the speed limit on every road in town. It'll be the same way with your side-by-side. We're fast enough not to impede traffic. Golf carts might be a little different, but the ATVs, the side-by-sides are not. And they're so much safer than a lot of cars. And that's my point.
Chief, you want to answer?
Yeah, just real quick, Wes. I appreciate you bringing that up. And I, I like the fact that you guys are differentiating between the different classifications for golf carts and then also the UTVs. Because I, I think that that's probably a valid thing that we need to look at specifically. We need to make more restrictions for golf carts versus the UTVs. And it's just a draft ordinance for right now.
Probably, that's why I was trying to clarify.
It's not anything that's set in stone. I, I appreciate this feedback and input. So that way, we're making the right choice for, for what's right in Ark City. for what's right in Arc City. So at the end of the day, it's just a draft ordinance at this point, collecting data, which I think we did a good job of that tonight. And so that, that gives me some idea on moving forward, and maybe I can bring something back to commission at some...
So how will this thing work, Chief? So you'll get with the attorney, Larry, and talk about this thing? And then do we need to have a workstation where we invite these people back, like on a Friday workstation, and kind of go over this thing again? I mean, more discussion or?
I think a lot of them are...
Information tonight, and I'll make myself available to them. So that way, if they have additional things that they want to impart to me, so that way I can try to work that into, to the document. But as far as a work session meeting, we can most certainly do that. But I think that this really set a good groundwork for moving forward and getting input.
Yeah. And they, a lot of them are working people too, and so they can't really, some of them may not be able to take off on a Friday at noon. So we would work around your schedules, and we have a public input on it. Again, I think it'll take the city manager and chief and, and city attorney a little bit to digest what's gone on, look up some of the things that you guys have brought up.
Chief, I got a question, another question. Maybe we look at this in two different fashions. Golf carts in one area and there, those other, there are things in another area. I don't know if you can put them both combined together, you know. You know, I'm just talking out loud. I mean, because golf cart's a little different than what they're talking about.
Right. Yeah, especially with the aspect of having seatbelts and lighting.
Most golf carts don't have seatbelts. Although they'd be probably restricted in residential areas, you know, kind of golf courses, where these things, you know, may have the possibility to go up and down Main Street, I think.
It's very valid not to lump them all together.
Right.
Into that one category.
Does that make sense to you guys?
Thank you, Commissioner Warren. I was, was hearing two different fashions.
Right.
And so to disaggregate the two, I think, is important, obviously.
Because you can't put them together.
Right.
Two different vehicles.
Absolutely.
I was going to say, first of all, they had a lot of good valid points, which everyone's just said. And I think the other thing is, I mean, if we knew every citizen out there was as safe and as careful as a lot of you guys out here in the audience, I don't think there'd be an issue at all. I think that's his main concern is maybe, I think differentiating's a great thing to do, and what Commissioner Warren said, I think is great. And I think I just wish if I had the knowledge and drove them like you guys did, I think it'd make everything a lot, everyone a lot safer out there.
And they're not...
Not cheap.
No, they're not a cheap, no, they're not a cheap toy. No, they're not cheap. No.
No, they're not.
I don't think there's anyone here specifically talking about golf carts. These are talking about a different type of...
I do believe, and I could be wrong, that I...
Have to come forward, please.
...I heard that, that they, the ATVs are acceptable on highways less than 65 miles an hour for agricultural purposes. So ideally, if I wanted to go to town for feed, I'm legal to get on 166 and drive all the way to town. Then when I get to town, I can't get in town. So that is kind of an issue. I could go to the co-op and just go straight to the co-op of that. But I could get to town, but I can't get to the co-op.
Thank you.
And I, I think that is correct.
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Sir Harter, come forward.
Ken Harter. I live on North First Street. I just wanted to add and ask one question. Our government's pushing us into EVs in the future. So a lot of people can't afford an EV. I know I can't buy a $90,000 electric vehicle. We all know fossil fuels, and I won't live that long. I'm going to be some accident. So I think the commission needs to consider the electric golf carts for use in town, especially me now being a senior. My legs ain't as good as they used to be. I would use one, and I think I might buy one if the city considered we could drive them on the streets in town. And the question I have is on the golf carts or the electric carts, they have lights, you can get everything on them. Would you consider having some kind of sign on the back, like slow-moving vehicle? I haven't heard anything about that. My wife asked me to ask this question. If they're not seen as, is there a requirement for the size of lights on the back or something that might bring the attention to the regular public driving to see the vehicle? I think that needs to be considered.
Carl, do some research on that.
Carl, are you still here?
Yes.
Wasn't there something like that in the, in the Wellington?
I don't...
I can't remember. It seemed like I was thinking there was.
I mean, you could...
That's my question. There is some areas that they have, you put the little triangle like the farmers have.
Yeah.
Slow-moving vehicle.
I thought that was the Wellington.
Something gets the public's attention if you're driving a little slow and, and they don't see you. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Yes, sir? Come forward, please.
Robert Fiesel. This is down in the Patrick Safford area in Arizona. My daughter lives down there, son-in-law and the grandkids. And they've got the four-wheelers, a couple of them, a side-by-side. I drive them down there. Everybody drives them down there. I see a lot. Lights, turn signals, the works, seatbelts, and no problems. They're great. And it's, well, it's bigger than Bob Gilmore's little car he drives every morning. So anyway, it's, they're just really pretty safe.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak on the subject? Yes, come forward, please.
Tim, again, I just have one quick question I forgot to ask earlier. I was just curious what ordinance our city has in action right now that says that we can't drive an insured UTV down the street?
Chief?
Can I answer that question? Vehicles. Yeah, it's just under the definition of vehicles in our standard traffic ordinance, which is online. You can check.
I tried to find it before I came, but how does that differ with a mini truck from this UTV?
I think it's all in the definition. I would have to look at it specifically and get back to you.
I didn't get, didn't get an answer, but...
Yeah, I know, I know. We'll figure it out. And I'm the first one to say that if I don't know something, I'll try to find it for you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. I was just curious because I try to...
Anyone else wish to speak on the subject before we close it?
Just kidding.
Okay. Any further updates?
Yeah, so I just want to let you guys know that Chief Parks retired again. Friday was his last day. And we interviewed two candidates for fire chief today, so you guys who are probably tomorrow or the next day on who may possibly be filling that role. The large main break at Kansas and Eighth, we were able to finally get the, the parks needed to shut that in and get that fixed on last Thursday. So that is now, now fixed in behind us. The Summit Street project, they're going to start striping tomorrow is their plan. They've told me things before and haven't showed up, so don't, but that's, they're supposed to start tomorrow and have that, and they should have, they're going to be making sure they have the turn lanes and that kind of thing done by Thursday for the school, for the start of the, the parts out of the way. The CanCap training that was supposed to be scheduled for tomorrow night, they, they're going to reschedule that, so I'll, I'll let you know on that.
Why, why do you, why do you cancel that out for?
So they, they, that's done with KR, Kansas Department of Health and Funding, and the funding hasn't been approved again for this.
Okay.
They thought it would be by now, but it hasn't. So as soon as that funding comes through, they'll get that rescheduled. The, so on either the 8/26 or 9/2, 9/2 is our regularly scheduled work session. PEC would like to come present the water master plan to the commission at a work session. So do you want to wait till the second, September 2nd, our regularly scheduled one, or sneak one in next?
Yeah. All right.
Yeah.
You guys okay with waiting till?
We can...
The regular one?
Yeah. All right.
Everybody? Okay.
No, there's no way to go.
Show up for that. So the 30, 31st and September 1st, I'm going to be in Wichita at the Kansas Housing Resource Housing Conference. So they have a three-day conference on, on all the different housing stuff that's going on in the state. So I just want to let you know about that. And then again, I'll remind you that the League of Municipality Conference is the 8th and 9th, 8th, 9th and 10th of October. And I'm assuming probably everybody that's going to go is signed up. Anybody else plan on going? Nope. Okay. So I already have rooms and you guys registered that have said yes so far, so we're good to go there. So that's all I've got.
Okay.
I've got one issue. It's plain driven on East Madison Bridge. We, we have the high, we, I guess we do the street on the east side of, that's city street, but there's three big potholes right against that bridge. Before they come on the bridge, I mean, it, it really, you have to slow down before you can get on the bridge.
The East Chestnut Bridge on the east side of the East Chestnut Bridge. Roz, you go.
Oh, that's it up on it.
No, not on the east side.
I think it is. I don't think it becomes city limits until you get up the hill this way. I'll check, but I know it's timed out because I yell at it every day.
Okay. Well, we need to get something going because, I mean, this, this is terrible. I've had too many complaints, and I always thought we had, we had it right there at the edge of the bridge, all that.
No, I think it, it's up a ways, isn't it? Isn't up the hill just a bit?
I thought it was up almost to a residential house on the north, almost past the guardrails and up is what I, I've been told so many things unless...
Okay.
Just past those guardrails a little bit, I think.
Check it out.
Check it out. Nothing else? We'll go on some.
Yeah, we need to do something. This is pretty bad right there.
Okay. Sir, you wanted to say something?
My name is Mickey Smith, and I have a question about the Summit Road project. Are you the city manager?
Yes.
Hey, is there any kind of guarantee or sign-off from Pearson on that project?
Yeah, there's a guarantee.
And are they satisfied and happy with the work there?
Well, the work's not finished. I mean, it's not finished yet, so we haven't done the final...
The writing's not finished.
Right, but we haven't done the final walkthrough and inspection yet, so...
Are they feeling pretty good about it?
I, I haven't heard any, so we have a engineering firm, a local firm, that has an inspector on site that's been inspecting the entire process. And to, I haven't heard of any dissatisfaction yet. I'd like to say we haven't done the final.
What's the guarantee on longevity on the project?
If I recall, I have to pull the contract out. I think they guaranteed it for a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further to come before the commission?
Can I?
Yes.
Share a comment with the, I think, kind of exacerbated a bit by the Summit Street stretch of construction. It seems that we've had a number of motorists who've now found a passion for Eighth Street because it's the, they've identified it as a way they can move all the way from the south end of town to the north end of town with minimum traffic restrictions. And I've had, I don't know what your threshold is for legitimate concern, but I've been kind of approached by, not kind of approached, I've been approached by half dozen citizens in the more densely populated area, which would maybe be like from 600 North Eighth going on north towards Kansas Avenue about, you know, people come up that hill and they get a pretty good little Fred Flintstone head of steam going. And some of the residents there, they're senior, have expressed a little anxiety with the problem of trying to safely back out of their driveways onto that what's now become a more vol, higher volume traffic area. It's perceived that the traffic is moving a little faster. I know as I left from Arc City High School this afternoon, I made a right turn going south on Eighth Street in front of a car that was southbound on the north side of the intersection. And before I could get to the end of that short block, it seemed like they were almost kind of nudging me. So I just pulled over and let them go by, but they crossed the intersection. And so we're getting kind of aggressive. I can see that in that area. Aggressive drivers. You add, you add again, the upcoming school traffic that'll be a greater volume for that. So maybe it deserves some at least monitoring. I know we really seem to have pretty good police traffic control out in that area, presence. But I just am saying that because I, the group of people who spoke to me, they typically are 600 to 900 block of North Eighth, and they are really concerned about being able to back out of their driveways with the rate of speed and the volume of traffic. I don't know that that'll go away completely.
Even with Summit Street opening, just because it is, I've done it for years. Not speed, not speed. But I've found it to...
The first one you should look for.
Yeah, that's right.
I've found it to be incredibly convenient if I'm going from Madison and need to get north, not to go through downtown or some of the side streets. We don't have a lot that take us all the way to the north end. But the volume has increased. I take it almost daily going to the high school. The volume has increased. And, and so if we, if we just maybe have a consciousness of where, of race, I don't...
Absolutely. And, and I think that more presence, more police presence there might slow things down. We are concerned about school starting and what that is going to do to our traffic flow. There are quite a few of those streets like Eighth, Second Street, Eighth Street that tend to get a lot of traffic beating Summit Street, especially during the construction. So we'll make an effort to get out there and make more presence.
Appreciate that, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Eric, for the space.
Anything else? Come before the commission, wishers in further discussion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm taking it. I'm going to take a really long time for this vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All vote same side.
If not, turn the lights out and we're done.